Hi, everyone. Good afternoon. This is beautiful Sunday afternoon. Thank you for coming today, everyone. My name is Patty Katz. I am the president of Reach Out America. We're here today to be a school board candidate president. Reach Out America is a local nonprofit that we're seeking for a series to enter in corporate legislative democracy. Our local meetings are the September 2nd. They're very inspirational. They're giving more resources every year. It's quite amazing to really see people get it. This way today, we're going to the evening meeting. So please come. It's at 7 p.m.
It's off now.
It's off?
No, it's on.
So you can hear me?
Yeah.
One more volume?
They can't hear me.
Yeah. So somebody say, "This is today at 7 p.m. and we're going to the library." We're having an evening meeting. There's our senators. There's a summary of the new meeting. And it's very exciting because she's going to be discussing the new past state budget. So that should be very interesting to me. And the thought is that pass will reflect and affect all of us locally. Also, true to that is our year fundraiser. This year, it's a special night case event. We had some line from five new residents from the Apple Valley, Sonoma, and the North Coast of Long Island with a multi-course, divine dinner, a little restaurant. So this event is almost over. So if you're interested, please see Harry Becker, Harry Greer's man. And she is the chair or whoever. You can also go online for Reach Out America's site to pay for this help. So this afternoon, we are having, as I said, a meeting with candidates for the school board election. It's being held on the May 16th. And all four of the candidates were invited to share this platform. However, we only have Tuesday. Let me go over a few parameters before we start. Each candidate will be allowed three minutes for an opening statement. After the opening statements, the moderator will open the meeting with questions from the audience, whoever fill out cards, thank you. If you still wanted to add a question, there are more questions here just to run through the house. These will be the ones prior to being asked, so they're careful notifications or views of revised questions. Each candidate will be given a minute and a half to answer each question. As I said, we start with three-minute opening statement and then a minute and a half to answer each question. There will be no rebuttal. Repeatedly sneaking past the deadline may result in the candidate losing time for their future question. No other candidates getting additional time. Candidates will then have two minutes for a closing statement. The moderator will be the final judge in all decisions. We will not be recording this event except we're having more short TV this year. Somebody asked me to turn off all your cell phones because we don't want you to be... Okay, just a second, thank you. Just turn off all your cell phones. No audio when we record this session. And I'd like to add...
What is your question?
Why do you know about?
That's just a form that we just... That we chose.
We chose.
Oh, we generated. You know, because we had, we've done these in the past, to be honest. We've had candidates go back before the screening and then each other. Yeah. We do have a region that would just really purpose to meet the candidates and get a feeling of each candidate. And it's unfortunate the other two weren't here. That would've been nice to just get the platform. But I'm very interested what they think they can do for the school board. So that's why, that's...
If you would just, if you ask a question and he answered, if you just question you have on it, and you follow that up, you can get an idea of what you want.
You can ask another question.
You can ask the cards. Have you, they, they, they still fill in cards. To ask.
During you fill out cards, if you want to ask another question, follow it during this session.
No, no, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, Joanne, yeah, the cards are right there.
Right there. So now, if you ask a question and want to follow a question, can you, how do you get the follow-up question for that?
Well, you can then fill out a card and...
I mean, you know...
Whatever, or raise your... We're flexible, but we do like to keep to the rules.
Fill out the card, give it to the better, the better will give it to the latter.
Right there.
And that's fine. It just will get a little bit out of order. It doesn't really make a difference. Questions will still get asked. Does that make sense?
During it, like...
Yeah, that's right. That's right there. If you'd like, if you'd like to get the card now, just please. If you mind, the question's not ready to hear that yet. Okay? So anyway, I would like to take this opportunity to present our moderators for the evening.
During it.
Okay? If somebody does not come to your connect, you've actually done that on purpose. We've had these meetings before and the moderators, like, I don't moderate meetings because I'm in the Great Neck district and I just, I'm fully in the school board. So we really like to keep it as partisan as possible. So that's not partisan, I'm sorry. That's not partisan as possible. So I'd like to introduce our moderator for the evening and it's Jessica Weaver. Thank you, Jessica, for being here.
Also, screaming, "Good evening." I'm so glad.
It's still after.
Alright. Alright, so, okay. I'm in Great Neck, I've never lived in Great Neck. I don't vote here. However, as a professional mutual party investigator examiner, I'll give you this conduct as one of the...
Oh, the question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It says, "Should we be on again?"
I can project. Can you hear me if I talk like this? Perfect. Alright, so I'll start over. My name is Jessica Weaver. I don't live in Great Neck. I've never lived in Great Neck. I work professionally as a mutual party investigator at a large university here in New York. I moderated several times for other organizations. I previously served as a PTA HSA member in Port Washington, where is where I am, as a treasurer and the co-president, were directors of the Port Washington Parental Source Center. So that's me. I'm going to ask you to enter a chat for the little rats. Can you just pick heads or tails?
Head, oh, head, head.
Yes. She said head.
She said head.
I'm in a hallway.
Sorry, that's probably me. Okay, I have heads. So you are running a course for our opening statements and closing statements. Okay? Alright. So, love you. I am here tonight because I believe that citizenship requires both knowledge and civic engagement. We have a couple of expectations for you. Patty has already read the rules. I'm going to ask you again to please make sure that your cell phones are off or silenced. Don't block the doors or camera, I guess. And your purpose, our purpose here is to hear from the kids. So let's focus on their voices and my words. Any audience member who agrees or violates the reading procedures for the forum or disrupts them by ignoring audience expectations after being warned and being asked to leave. Okay? Alright. So we've got our favorite candidates. If you'd like to, I guess, take a seat.
So the mic doesn't work in...
No, it comes down here.
Do you want to try to ring the phone or do you want to try it?
I'll try the microphone.
Okay, let's try it.
Sure.
No, it's not working. Turn it off and then turn it back on.
Yeah. Do you want me to sit?
What do you usually do?
What do you comfortably, why do you stand up at the left?
Or sit? When you're talking to...
No, so sit.
That's good, sit.
That's fair. You can stand.
Okay.
I'm Joan Chan. I've been resident of Great Neck for 20 years. I've been volunteering at all schools that I've started at in the end for 15 years. We started off with several schools, went to South Middle, South High, and I've been volunteering in all the PTAs. I'm also a volunteer at the Unity C, which oversees all PTAs. And I became the co-resident in 2016. During that time, there was a bond referendum that had been over once. And I told myself that I came to start a war and make sure that the bond passed in 2017. On the long of all, my youngest one is about to graduate from South High and I find myself having available time to serve on board with it. And therefore, when she decided not to run and he asked me to run in place, I couldn't do that after speaking with my family, who are all very supportive of me spending my time with serving the district. My background is a traditional farmer. I came from a traditional farmer when I was 15 years old. I went to New York City public schools before I went to college. I sent all my children to public schools and I believe that public money, go to public school, pull the poll again, good. And that's why I'll leave it. And that's why I will serve on board with it. Thank you very much.
I would say you have your members in the corner.
Yeah, that's my ultimate, I meant to say. Oh, be too honest. No, I, I, I'll hold. Are you on, if you, if you're getting... What are you, what are you on, 10 seconds? I ran out of time. Yeah. You'll hear a bit of a second. Okay. Okay. You ready?
Thank you very much to Reach Out America for organizing today. And thank you all for coming out on a beautiful day to sit in this room to hear from Joanne and me. My name is Rebecca Sesuni. I am running for reelection to the Board of Education. I have lived in Great Neck for 29 years this month. I moved here when I married my husband and have lived in Great Neck for longer than any place else in my life. I'll return to that if I still have time. My husband and I have raised four children here. They all went to the Great Neck Public Schools. And I basically ended up running for Board of Education, actually similar to what Joanne said, because of the 2017 failed bond referendum. For those of you who might recall, in 2017, there was a secular bond referendum. It failed by 114 or 112 votes. And at that time, I was very involved in the parent leadership of the United Parent Teacher Council. As I mentioned, I have four children. My involvement in schools began over at the JFK Elementary School, where I chaired shared decision-making. It advanced, my leadership advanced when I grew with my children at the shared decision-making committee at the North Mill School and then the North High School. So by 2017, I was chair of the Legislative Committee of the United Parent Teacher Council. I was on the executive board of the UPTC. And as Joanne referenced, there was a failed bond referendum. At that time, some of the other parent leaders had run for office and had unfortunately failed. There had been, I would say, divisiveness among the parent leadership and in the public. You know, it was the beginning of, I was going to say, a period of contested elections that were here. And so a lot of people turned to me.
Turn the light just turn off.
No, it's not, sorry.
No, it's not. Turn it on now.
People turned to me and said, "Rebecca, you must run." So even though it did not conform to my plan, I ran. I won the seat in, over the landslide at the time, along with a co-host of support for a past bond and a past budget. Having been in the seat for three years, watching the board, observing, learning is as much as one face swat knows from the parent side of things. And I thought I could some. I worked a great deal during my first term as a trustee. And I tried to watch, listen, be a good colleague. And in my second term, in 2020, we had a global pandemic. I ran again and I stayed on the board until I was reelected. And during the second term of office, I was elected president, colleagues, as president. And now the president of the board. I am seeking reelection. I'm happy to talk about one, some of the reasons why. They include that we're searching currently for the next superintendent of schools.
Thank you, candidates. For the first question, and we begin with you, Ms. Chan. What is your educational and professional background making you the best candidate for this position? Do you have any sense?
I went to graduate school for electrical engineering, where I thought that I learned about problem solving, how to put together different ideas and make a combination of a solution to a problem. And later on, I went to study master in business administration at night. And I focused in finance and international business. In my, in the past 24 years, I've been managing my own practical medical practice. And my role is to manage the budget, to hire people, and give performance reviews. And when I found out that the job of the trustee is to hire the used story attendant and to watch the budget, I thought, maybe I have some experience to do similar thing that I've been doing in the past 24 years.
The question is, what is your educational and professional background making you the best candidate for this position?
In my educational background, I'm an attorney of law. I graduated from hospital school. I worked in a corporate law firm for a period of time, retired in order to raise my children, returned to practice of law. And I actually represented students with special education needs and students who get in trouble in school and who have tuition disputes and things of its nature. Of course, I did not represent students who bring action against the Great Neck Public Schools that would be in our active interest. I do think that the inevitable worries, the obstacles one exists that the lawyer do come to bear, and I have been able to utilize those to go to the FSC in the Fort Worth C. It is a very large organization, the Fort Worth C. And it, it is part of my men about once I was elected and came to the side of the board table, understanding the size of the organization, the number of students, the number of employees, the different stakeholder groups that are raised by the district. All of these are also legal issues, I think.
The next question, and we'll begin a new list this morning, is what do you think are the most important qualities in a superintendent?
So I'm going to be very respectful here because I'm one trustee among five and I happen to be an incumbent. But speaking as a candidate, what I think are the most important qualities in the trustee, sorry, the superintendent of schools? First, we need to find someone who is very experienced, someone who has already served as a superintendent of schools in a large district such as Great Neck, that is also an excellent district such as Great Neck with a broad base, a level of support for all students' education and attainment as Great Neck. What I mean by that is here in Great Neck, we thankfully enjoy not only outstanding excellence in academics, but also the music and sport in the arts. And I could go on and on. And as a superintendent to understand that, as well as what I just referred to, the management perspective, the relations, the human relationships with the public, with the teachers, with the administrators, team building, with the parents. All of these are very important things to look for in a superintendent. The additional piece, and I think this is one of these sort of visionary things that are hard to describe and I'm certainly looking for, is that visionary piece. That is what we look for for telling the story of Great Neck and the narration of the story that we tell ourselves as Great Neckers about the meaningful of that education.
Would you like me to repeat the question, Ms. Chan?
Oh, no. Thank you.
Okay, so the question was, what are the most important things? I'm just going to talk about one idea.
It's working. Okay, good. No, it's not. Yeah, it's all, okay.
So my one idea about the quality that I'm looking for in the new superintendent is that I would like to see the superintendent to be focused on people, invest in people. And that has been my philosophy when I hired people for my husband's office, is that I want people to be well-trained. I want to invest in them. I provide training. I encourage them to improve. And I would like to see that to be a quality as a new superintendent. Because the new superintendent is going to have to work with all the administrators and teachers to make sure that our customers, who are the students, are benefit, will benefit from the education.
Ms. Chan, we'll begin with the next question. And that question is, how would you approach bringing different stakeholder groups together?
Oh, no, I'm in a car. That's okay. Yeah, sure. No, just okay. Okay. When do the different stakeholder groups together? I would refer back to my experience in UPTC being the chairperson of all community involvement. I try to make group people who would otherwise not be, not aware of what's going on in the school district. So what I used to do was to invite people to board event meetings to read up on what's going on in the district. And I found that the past six years, one big improvement, I would say, is that the board event meetings are now online. So if you're taking care of your kids and you're not able to go in person, you can always watch it the next day. And that's the process that I think to make people aware of the issues that are impacting our children. I do also believe that as a trustee, I will have the responsibility of talking to all the stakeholders in the district, including administrators, teachers, and even students. I can, I'm a mother of two, so I can find out a lot of things on my kids, how they used to feel, how they're feeling now, how their friends are feeling. And I can always talk to other parents during play days and stuff like that. So, okay, my time is up.
Thank you.
How would you approach bringing different stakeholder groups together?
I think that the way we bring stakeholder groups together is to encourage dialogue across difference. One of the ways the board has tried to do that this year is by bringing an advisory group together that was across stakeholder groups and that did not get sourced from any particular group, not from a particular union or from the particular parent, the PTOs. We, I'm using the word disaggregated. We literally just opened it up to the public and 80 people applied. And we had 40 residents and employees who actually participated in the advisory group. And we had exercises where people who did not know one another before were conversing in guided exercise about what mattered to them, what matters, plural, to them about the Great Neck Public Schools. And we learned a lot about different prioritizations that people make in their viewpoints on schools. Another way is to just keep reassuring anyone who listens that the schools are here to educate, but also are here to remain viewpoint neutral. I think that we have unfortunately gotten caught up in this wave of, you know, personal narratives and people's echo chambers and these feelings that people are being excluded when they really aren't, not on purpose.
A point of therapy, Ms. Chan. There are actually two seats for this board. And in addition, there are four candidates, two of which are here. Alright?
Oh, we're inviting.
Oh, we're inviting. Well, so that...
And that, we're not a colleague.
Yeah, can you make that clarification? We are not a colleague.
Then I should give you two different seats.
So that's right. So these are two people running for two different seats. There are two seats available. They are unhidden and they're not running against each other. So I wanted to make that clarification. And the next question will be asked, which will begin with you in this meeting. Have you declined any invitations to public forums?
No. No.
This will begin with discussion with you, Ms. Chan. What do you see as the biggest challenge in public education?
I think the biggest challenge in public education is, is the, is how to, how to be a good steward for the money that we collect from taxpayers. Ultimately, everything comes down to money, right? After all, but how we spend money wisely? Should it be more on instruction? Should it be more on extracurricular activities? Or however the balance might be, we need to answer to our taxpayers. And I think the biggest challenge is with different stakeholders in the community and everybody wants a bigger share for their own pie, that we need to be able to, to be accountable for the public, accountable for the taxpayers, and be able to meet all the needs of the different stakeholders.
What is the biggest challenge today in public education? What do you see, excuse me, as the biggest challenge in public education?
Great Neck.
I'm assuming the question isn't certain.
I hesitate to comment on the biggest, the biggest challenge in public education at the board because I'm not a trustee anywhere other than in Great Neck. And that's the only incumbent currently, not only in this race, because there are, again, as was mentioned, there are four candidates for two seats and I'm the only incumbent. So I'm just going to share my personal insights on Great Neck and challenges of public education in Great Neck. So I want to say that what Joanne has said is accurate, that at the end of the day, resources and the allocation of resources, taxes, are very much a piece of this accountability, reassuring the public that taxes are not being wasted. So on that point, I would say we have recently hired a new assistant superintendent for business and the business office has been revamped. And I'm very sure that the board and myself are very much committed to making sure that monies are not misallocated. But I would add to that, in Great Neck, another challenge to public education is that, is what I referenced before. I guess a distrust of whether the schools are actually presenting a viewpoint neutral education, which is to say, there is a view out in the, in the culture, I would say, that some families have latched onto, that the schools are trying to indoctrinate their children. And that is simply, you know, unfortunate. And so what we need to do in public education on a regular basis is to disavow people of this view, to reassure families that that's not the case.
Next question assumes a fact. And if it is inaccurate fact, then that can be part of your answer. I'm just going to say that. I don't, I'm not part of this district, so I don't know, which is why I mentioned that. Why is the school district renting out an old current, the old current real school on Martin Lane, even though it is in violation of the common? And the first answer is for you, Ms. Chan.
Mr. Raphael, as you know, I've got a question right. I will say, as we have said before at public action meetings, that the matter is being taken under advisement. And I thank you for your question.
Well, since you can't answer me directly, I can actually only answer that. Actually, it would be wonderful and more orderly if we could not do that and allow Ms. Chan, her chance to answer the question. I understand what you did. Sir? You listen to the votes, you answer the votes. It's Ms. Chan's turn to answer the question. Ms. Chan.
I'm just going to be honest and don't pretend that I know. I actually don't know all that topic and so I'm not going to answer that. Sorry about that.
Ms. Chan, the next question is for you. And it is, what can be done to operate the GMSE athletic facilities so that they are quality facilities and on par with the other school districts?
Again, I'm not involved in that discussion. This is the first time I hear about that request. And when I do get elected and become a trustee, I would love to speak to the different stakeholders. Obviously, the first one will be the people who request that upgrade to happen and also to review the budget with my fellow trustees to see what can be done to our public sector.
The question again is, what can be done to upgrade the GMSE athletic facilities so that they are quality facilities and on par with other school districts?
It's a fair question. I wish I could answer it comprehensively for each of the fields and each of the 10 buildings that are used. What I can say very specifically is that, as we know, every year there are capital projects that are approved annually, in addition to the bond referendum that also addressed this in 2017. The bond being for a 20-year term, the capital projects being annual. I'm aware, for example, at least in one example, that at South Middle, some of the fields are being updated this year. And I believe also that North Middle, I can... some of the fields are being updated this year, and I believe also that North Middle, I can't wait to just speak, by the way, because again, there are different projects being done, and they're often done, as you would imagine, all the summer, because that's when my children are not there um every day in school. But then they're also done on a staggered schedule, because sometimes the buildings and the grounds are used for summer programs and camps. So scheduling of the projects, as well as the um the bidding on the projects, and then having them be done on an annual basis in capital reserves is something that the board handles every year annually. I do understand that embedded in the question was also the on par point, which is that our fields are lackluster compared to some of our nearby and/or competitor districts. That is true, that is true for all, and I'm sorry for it.
Ms. Chan, I'll receive the question.
Do you like answering all your questions?
I know, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, I apologize, yeah, I apologize. Um so, the next question is for you, Ms. Chan. Can you define the role of school board trustee with regards to curriculum?
I will try to answer the question about the role of the school board trustee with regards to curriculum. It is one of those um hot button issues. Um my understanding is that our role in general is that school boards are authorized on the purchase of the books, for example, and the textbooks, and I suppose also on the um the uh the contracts that bring in outside providers to do trainings, for example, uh for professional development. So insofar as school boards as a whole, through a majority, uh would want to get involved in interceding to stop the purchase of a particular book or a particular text or a particular professional development opportunity. I believe that that is allowed by resolution and by vote of a majority of the board. I personally, as a trustee, do not feel that it is my personal role or wish, even though I do a lot and I spend a great deal of time on this district. I personally do not feel that it is my role to intercede and to replace my judgment and impose it on the of administrators and teachers who have the professional knowledge. And um I don't want to do that, I have a sense of.
Ms. Chan.
My understanding of the role of the trustee on the Board of Ed is to hire the superintendent. And the superintendent will in turn work with administrators and teachers to decide on curriculum. So while the Board of Ed may have influence on which superintendent to hire, the Board of Ed does not directly become the curriculum of the school. That is my understanding of the role of the Board of Ed trustee.
Alright, the next question will be given to Ms. Chan. And it is, what do you see as areas of uh for change or strengthening in the school district? And how would you go about implementing change in one or more areas?
My focus on the district um has always been community building. Um I think some positive changes can occur if we could facilitate um experiences for different stakeholders to be able to communicate um with each other, listen to each other, um so that the di- so that the district is not as divided right now. I think it takes a lot of patience, it takes communication in order for people to really understand um why the other side, so to speak, say the same, the thing they say, and why they feel a certain way. Um communication really is um, I believe, is the first step to mending a relationship. Uh we're really all in this together as a community. Uh we're all Great Neck residents, and we all want the best for our kids. So I think the first step to improve and make a positive change is to enhance communication.
What do you see as areas for change or strengthening in the Great Neck School District? And how would you go about implementing change in the area or areas?
I think that in our search for our superintendent of schools, what we're really looking for is a visionary who will help set the tone across the districts of inclusivity, of vision, and he says that, as Joanna sort of said, that we're in in a common endeavor and that we're in it together. But also to reassure even those who don't have children in the schools um and our residents, because those are also our constituents. I mean, again, myself, and at this point, my children have graduated, and I regard this common, as as a shared endeavor, to reassure that the schools are here for everyone, to raise our next generation of ci- of citizens, really. And that that's the kind of vision that we're looking for, and that's the kind of conversation we're looking for. And that it is viewpoint neutral, but at the same time, very inclusive. And that's, and that is a communications effort at the end.
Alright, the next question will be, Great Neck is highly polarized, how do you polarize? How would you try through your role as trustee to bridge the gap? Do you use?
I wanna find the premise, I mean, Great Neck feels highly polarized, but at the same time, I think there are pockets of the community, including the schools, where I don't feel polarization. And I think we need to build on those places. And I wish that I could take those of you who are here in the room with me right now, and those of you who might watch instead of being a day, into our classrooms um or into some of our sports activities, to some of our PTO events, things um that I have the benefit of seeing um firsthand, to understand where there are actually great deal of commonalities. The feeling of seeing children playing together, learning together, seeing families come together and sitting side by side to celebrate their children's achievements, which is actually a great deal more that brings families together than that divides them. And I think bringing those points home more frequently, which is at the end what the schools do, whether at a concert or in a field, on a field, excuse me, or in a classroom, those kinds of endeavors need to be stressed more frequently than the polarities.
Ms. Chan, do you have your question?
Uh yeah, sure, please.
Great Neck is highly polarized, how would you try through your role as a trustee to bridge the gap?
Um, okay, Great Neck is highly polarized, and I would like to use the analogy of a marriage, I'm not a marriage counselor, but I feel that um generalizing a situation is never good for a relationship. So if your spouse does something and you say to yourself, you always do that. Uh that is the first thing that is gonna hurt your spouse. And I think that the first step we need to take is not to generalize. Um there's one board that is questionable. Don't generalize and say that, oh, they should take out all the books that related to that subject. Um there's one student doing some sort of damage in the school. Don't generalize and say, well, this is what the school does every day to indoctrinate kids. I think the first step is to deal with it on a case-by-case basis. If there's one goal that is questionable, bring it up, talk to the teacher, talk to the principals, and find out why is it questionable, and what should we do about a student who should be exempt from reading that book, for example. I think things should be dealt with in a case-by-case basis, and uh I think uh not generalizing the situation will be the first step to mending the relationship.
Alright, the next question will begin with you, Ms. Chan, and that is, can you clarify the V O E role regarding state mandates such as gender neutral bathrooms, D E I policy, equity inclusion, disability accommodation, and can you give examples?
I accept that the Board of Education's role is to establish policies to um for school, for all school, for all students. Uh in terms of D E I, my understanding is that there is not currently a policy specifically to address D E I. Uh that is my understanding. As far as the other uh issues that you just mentioned, I have to say I don't know if there is or there isn't. Um, did I answer everything or, uh there were the different things?
There were, I think it was asking, giving you examples and asking you to elaborate, so I didn't get it covered, anyway.
Okay, well, I elaborate on the D E I, which I'm not aware of specific. And and the reason uh I believe is that the district is already in spirit uh being inclusive and and thus, it is no need to create a special policy to address the D E I issue.
So the question once again is, can you clarify the V O E role regarding state mandates such as gender equal bathrooms, D E I policy, equity inclusion, disability accommodations, and can you give examples?
So, again, I I happen to be a lawyer, I don't think it's required, just needs to be a lawyer, I happen to be a lawyer. I happen to also represent students in this area. But I just wanna pan out for a minute and just remind anyone who's watching or listening, Great Neck Public Schools have to follow the law. That's really it. We have to follow the law for students, we have to follow the law for our employees. The law is the law. And this is ultimately, um again, from a management perspective, um part of that is for the purpose of protecting our students, protecting our staff. Part of it is to be able to defend, um and they, and they have a permit situation where as a, as a defendant, the school district faces a liability situation. But any way you slice it, the law is the law. So if a child goes to our schools, they need to be safe. They need to be safe and feel protected and receive their education, free and appropriate public education, irrespective of how many boxes of otherness they may check, whether it's, whatever it is that they're protected under the Dignity for All Students Act, whether it's their creed, their gender, their um their hair, their religion, their ethnicity, or several of those. And the same is going to be true of our staff, that they too should feel safe at work. And that's just the law. As it relates to curriculum or to policy, I think we're already addressed, thank you.
Alright, the next question, I'm reading just as it's written. What's your plan to deal with the G M T A? Ms. Chan, what can you?
Is this microphone on? Oh, now it's working. I just wanna apologize that my voice is very hoarse and raspy. It's because I've just been talking a lot this week, and I wish I still had a little less raspy. Um as to the G M T A, I'm not quite sure what the phrase deal with means. But um at the moment, I will say that um I believe that we're dealing with them very nicely. Um we have um, we have a board in a unit called the G M T A that stands for the Great Neck Teachers Association. Uh there are many, many employees um who work in the Great Neck Teachers Association, who we value, who teach our children, and as well who work in other units. That's, the G M T A is an umbrella organization, it also includes the office staff and actually other units as well, which fall um under their umbrella. And um I'm not, you know, I don't know what else the question really means, to be frank.
And Ms. Chan, the question again was, what's your plan to deal with the G M T A?
My plan to deal with the G M T A is to thank them for all the work that they do for the children and to show them that I appreciate them. So that's my plan in dealing with the G M T A.
And this question will begin with you, Ms. Chan. There has been an emphasis here on change, but not futurism. What areas of education slash digitization and learning are trending?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part.
There has been an emphasis here on change, but not futurism. What areas of education slash digitization and learning are trending?
Are we talking about this um A I thing on the internet? I'm not sure if I understand the question. Uh digitization of uh, I don't really understand the question, I'm sorry.
Do you want me to repeat it one more time?
Sure.
It says, I'll be back in a second. Um what areas of education slash digitization and learning are trending?
Okay, okay. Oh, the A, yeah, okay, and and what was the question?
At the start was, there's been an emphasis here on change, but not futurism.
Change, but not futurism. Okay?
That's the question.
Alright, well, I'm not sure if I'm gonna standardly answer this particular question, but I am on the P T O of South High, and it's been discussed amongst parents with the principals about the coming of A I assisting students in writing their essays. Uh and we did have a P T A meeting, an open meeting for all the parents to come in, in which uh the administrators show them how the technology works, meaning that the teachers all know how it works. Meaning that if students write their essays using the technology, the teachers will know. And uh that's what I know about it, uh futuristic, I, I mean, I'm not sure. Uh personally, I think that um the Great Neck Public School teachers and administrators, they are very up to date on technology. So uh students are also taught that if they wanna try something new, the teachers are gonna know.
Should I repeat it again?
Sure.
Just in case, there has been an emphasis here on change, but not futurism. What areas of education slash digitization and learning are trending?
And thank you for the call drop. Um I, I actually, again, I'm sorry, I have to find my, I think that we do have a, a great deal of emphasis on the future. Um so, but then people talk against it, so you know, we had an iPad curriculum, for example, where every student in our elementary school right now is being handed an iPad to learn how to use technology. And that was done in advance of our state deciding, as it has, that even the state assessments are going to be administered via technology, meaning the kids are no longer gonna be bubbling in even under state assessments uh pretty soon. So Great Neck was ahead on that, giving the kids a chance to use technology. As Joanna referenced, artificial intelligence, this chat G P T, it's on a rage. And our administrators um went and had sessions on it. We have an information specialist as well as Dr. Lander, who is the person who's the point guy on the iPad initiative and all the technology, learning about it, so that we could even adjust our code of conduct in order to ascertain when students are, what we should do when students breach the code of conduct by, shall I say, plagiarizing, uh using these um forms of um technology. When my kids went to school, we were using, they were, they were using something called chernitin.com to figure it out. Now it's chat G P T, nothing new under the sun, it's just trying to stay ahead of the game. I know I went over time, but we also have a TV station, and we give kids a chance to learn how to use technology all the time, so I, I assume with the premise.
The next question, the question is a little long, I'm gonna just mention, it's gonna start with you, Ms. Chan. Just letting you know. Um to a great extent, social media is the culprit for much of the disruptions in our society. School boards are affected by the anger and the lies that ensue. What can be done to end the rancor and to some extent, uh What can be done to end the rancor and, to some extent, um, restore some sanity to our community?
I appreciate the spirit of the question, and I wish I had the answer. I uh, I I wish I had the answer. I, I have been myself the victim of the rancor, and of course, I'm also accused of being the cause of the rancor. It's one of these uh chicken egg situations, it's very hard to tell. I think we do have um basic misunderstandings of um what's acceptable discourse in the, in the public realm. And until that is addressed, and I don't know how, how, who is the proper authority who's going to address that. Um, I don't know how we make that better. I certainly have tried, and I hope others will too, and I think this is an example of where it takes a village.
Ms. Chan, do you want me to reread the question or are you prepared to answer?
Sure, please.
In, to a great extent, social media is the culprit for much of the disruption in our society. School boards are affected by the anger and lies that ensue. What can be done to end the rancor and return to some sanity in our community?
Um, social media has been really powerful in disseminating information, the good ones and the bad ones. Um, that's just the nature of the beast. I feel that as a um, as a Board of Ed trustee, I'm going to empower our technology administrators to teach our children how to handle social media, to, first of all, not to cyberbully, and second of all, how to protect their own privacy. So that's the first thing with the next generation. As far as the attack on the Board of Education, um, I'm not sure if that could be stopped. I think it goes back to what I said before about mending relationship uh within the community. I think um if we work on the relationship, then these things will slowly uh just disappear, hopefully. So the first thing is to not generalize, communicate, and respect one another's views.
The next question will begin with you, Ms. Chan. It is, what will you do to recover from our dismal college acceptance rate this past year and last year? Again, I read that verbatim.
Okay, so what am I gonna do about that?
Oh, that is a question.
Um, the Board of Education trustee's job is to set up policies for the whole school. And the policies are not there to have a goal of how many kids get into Harvard, Yale, and so on and so forth. Um, so what am I gonna do about that? Nothing. There's nothing I can do about that, I'm sorry.
I'm just gonna make sure this is working. Do you want me to add a quick comment to questions, Susanne?
No, I remember this. Thank you. I'm not aware of the college acceptance rate is dismal. Um, it's probably not true. Uh, and it would be very unusual for Great Neck to have a dismal college acceptance rate because we graduate over ninety-six percent of our students to colleges every year. So this is an example of where loaded language is a problem. Um, if what was meant is acceptance to particular schools, public education is about reaching every student at their level and helping them attain at their level of ability, and that's what the board is here for. Um, it's not to guarantee a particular result to a particular college. So I would kind of have to echo Joanne, I'm gonna pass it on.
Uh, the last question will be, uh, do you think children's emotional and physical health is helped or harmed by having armed guards in schools and active shooter drills? Uh, it is, I'm a advocate to keep things
Okay, I'm sorry that it keeps coming in and out. Um, I think that these active shooter drills, which are again required by law, it's not that we have a choice. I have to imagine they have very deleterious effects on children's mental health. Um, when I heard through presentations that we've had what our children have to go through on these drills, it's very alarming. I'll give one example that always remained with me. We have elementary school students and middle and high school students learning that if they're in the bathroom when there's a drill, they should get on a toilet bowl and stand on it so that if somebody was to come in, um, they wouldn't be able to see underneath the stall. That's a level of sophistication that I don't know that a child should ever need to have. Uh, but of course, that's because in a bathroom, there's no cameras. And so if a child had the misfortune of being in the bathroom, but a shooter would actually come in, there would be no other way to save them. So they need to be taught at that level, and as well, to be quiet, not to flush. I'm giving that as an example because I imagine learning such a thing is very scary, and they need to learn it. The same way I had to learn as a child to hide under the desk because that was the protocol in the nineteen seventies in Queens when they were worried about a bomb being dropped. You know, I'm forgetting the chart, I know which chart I'm about to say.
Ms. Chan, do you want me to read the question again?
Uh, sure.
Do you think children's emotional and physical health is helped or harmed by having armed guards in the schools and active shooter drills?
Um, as far as the active um shooter drills, I believe I echo Mrs. Suni's answer. I think it is important to prepare your children for the role, not a role for your children. So equipping them with response uh plan is very important. So I, I um, in agreement with the drills. Now, as far as the armed guard, is that part of the question? Because I don't think we should have armed guards in the school. Because I think that if we have armed guards in the school, that's showing our children there is a dangerous world here and instills fear. And I don't think we're ready for that yet.
This will be the last question, Ms. Chan will begin with you.
Alright.
Um, what can be made as your strategy to improve the lunch nutrition program in the schools?
Okay, so this question is um basically saying that it's not good. Uh, from what I've heard, it's actually quite acceptable. So I don't have a plan to improve because my understanding is that the lunch program is acceptable, the food quality.
And again, last question, Mrs. Suni. What is your strategy to improve the lunch nutrition program in the schools?
As a trustee, I don't really get involved in the lunch nutrition program. However, I will say that I'm very pleased that in the last several years, we've hired a particular individual who is overseeing the lunch, the lunch program, and who has brought a lot of creativity to that because he used to work in the private space as a caterer. And he has made it his business to try to improve what's offered in the different buildings based on um what the children actually eat. He's actually keeping track of what they desire to eat, and he's offered special offerings on holidays and such, and is able to see what sells. And he's trying to find affordable ways, because it has to be affordable, and it still has to meet, meet, excuse me, U S D A guidelines. Uh, but he is trying to meet those, meet those benchmarks where it's affordable and desirable to try to make the food more exciting for the kids. But beyond that, I don't really have a plan uh to change the lunch offerings.
Thank you very much for the answers to your questions, um, do you want to close?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone, and please thank you to Jessica, Jessica.
Oh, sorry, your closing statement, that's our last question.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Excuse me, alright, no, I didn't want to do that, that's alright. Sorry, just read it.
Sure, just go ahead.
Alright, so just a reminder of the time, we have two minutes for closing statements, and we will be closing soon.
So I appreciate everyone who's listening. I have been in Great Neck for twenty-eight years, as I mentioned. Uh, what I didn't mention at the start is that my first language was not English, and I've lived in many places before I came to Great Neck. And I consider it my very good fortune and my children's good fortune that they graduated from these wonderful schools. I actually, uh, for all the polarities here, and we are experiencing them, I'm very grateful to the schools and to this community. And my service here is an extension of my gratitude. I thought long and hard about whether I should run for reelection. Um, I'm not gonna lie, it's been a challenge these last couple of years, as has been referenced. It's not been an easy time in public education, in elected office, in Great Neck, or pretty much anywhere USA. That being said, I decided to run out of my gratitude to Great Neck, and as well, because I didn't want to leave the board and lurch at a time when we are about to hire our next superintendent of schools. Um, I do have a certain amount of institutional knowledge at this point. I don't think that that can just be cast aside. Um, it's regrettable that the person who's running against me has not seen fit to show um at a point where I could actually, you know, be in her presence so that the public would have an opportunity to hear both voices and compare experiences, or the lack thereof. Uh, but nevertheless, I have decided to run. I do face a challenger, and I do hope that those of you who care to will see fit to vote accordingly and to vote in support in reelection. Thank you.
Ms. Chan?
Um, I'm um running as a new person for Judge Shee's seat, not her seat, Judge Shee's seat. And I do have an opponent. So what I'd like to leave with you today is that I believe that I'm more experienced than my opponent. I've been in the school system for fifteen years, serving in different P T As. Um, I have four children, three of them have already gone through the college application process. Um, my I believe that I answer to taxpayers. And if anybody want to vote for my opponent because they think that my opponent is gonna do their bidding, that's your choice. But I do all taxpayers did it. That's my thing, to run for a vote, because I support public education. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I'm Kansas, man. Can you hear me?
Alright, I'll just speak. I just want to thank all of you. Thank Rebecca Sissouni, Joanne Chan, thank you, Dorothy. Thank you so much, Jessa, the moderator. I'd like to thank Nina Gordon for doing the finding and the natural for hearing the questions. And also Alan Nudel, who is the owner of the Great Neck, the end of Great Neck. Uh, we can't thank you enough for your generosity to this community, you're constantly giving, all the time. As the president of China America, I just want to remind all of you that we have our event this Wednesday with Assemblywoman Gina Zaletti, seven o'clock at the library, please come. And our fundraiser, June fifth, at Lola's, uh, will be at, we have seven o'clock, uh, June fifth at Lola's. So please join us, thank you all for coming this afternoon on this beautiful, one of the beautiful, finally beautiful days on a Sunday. And thank you, don't forget, please vote. Thank you, Nina, please vote, May sixteenth.
Seven A M.
Seven A M, thank you, thank you.